Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Stand up.
I would say so very well. And the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Here.
Councilmember Jack Sedick.
Here.
Councilmember Lizzo.
Here.
Councilmember McLean.
Here.
Councilmember Reinaker.
Here.
Thank you. We now move into the presentation portion of the evening. And this is a really special thing that I get to do. Would Roy Brown, please, come up? And would Roy's family join him? We have a very honored citizen here. And I want to present a proclamation to you, Roy. Here, come over here. Yes. So I'm going to go ahead and read the whole thing, too, because you need to get a sense of what a valuable citizen we have standing next to me. Whereas Roy Brown, a dedicated and accomplished resident of the city of Kirkwood, Missouri, has long demonstrated a steadfast commitment to public service and civic engagement in addition to his distinguished professional career. And whereas Mr. Brown has recently been honored and inducted as a Fellow of the Society of Nuclear Medicine and Molecular Imaging, a prestigious distinction awarded to individuals who have made significant scientific, clinical, and educational contributions to the field of nuclear medicine. And I'm going to just live here for a minute. This Roy is the first person ever made a Fellow in this organization that didn't have DR or PhD somewhere on his title. So the rest of the fellows were just so excited that somebody from the business community was named a Fellow. We're excited, too. And then let me tell you some of the things that he's done for our city. His civic roles have included a member of the Kirkwood Park Board, the Citizen Finance Committee, the Board of the Kirkwood Family YMCA, the Board of Trustees stages St. Louis, the Board of the Gaylord Foundation, and the Kirkwood Historical Society. Through his work and with these organizations, he has played a vital role in shaping the culture, recreational, historical, and fiscal landscape of Kirkwood, enriching the lives of its residents and ensuring a vibrant, sustainable future for the community. And his professional and civic achievements reflect the highest ideals of leadership, service, and community spirit and bring great pride and distinction to the city of Kirkwood. And let me tell you some of his professional things he's done. He's been White House Office of Science and Technology Policy Working Group for Medical Isotopes, the European Union Observatory for Supply of Medical Isotopes, the founding chairman of the Council of the Radiological... How do I say that, Roy? Radio Pharmaceutical and Radionuclides, the Board of Directors of Nuclear Medicine Europe, the Education and Research Foundation for Nuclear Medicine, the Steering Committee of the University of Missouri Next Generation Research Reactor. I'm going to get tears. It's my honor as the mayor of the city of Kirkwood on behalf of the Kirkwood City Council to proclaim today, September 18th, 2025, as Roy Brown Day in the city of Kirkwood. That's so much fun. That's the fun stuff we get to do. Okay. Now, we have no public hearings today. David, has anyone signed a card to speak with us on public comment?
Mayor and council, there's a request for comment from Tom Moser.
Oh. Sorry, I forgot to turn it around, Tom.
Good evening, mayor and council members and everyone else, distinguished guests. I would like to comment on the traffic enforcement. And I'm not criticizing the police department. They're writing the tickets. But there's no penalty given to these offenders as the first thing they do is they run down to the traffic lawyer and have it reduced to a non-moving violation. That does not create a penalty. That's an inconvenience. Having points added to their driver's license and letting the insurance companies finding out about these tickets and raising the rates would be more of an enforcement than non-moving violations. And I hope that council members and the mayor may direct the courts to tighten the reins on these traffic lawyers, getting the tickets reduced to non-moving violations. And hopefully, that will incentivize these drivers to not run red lights repeatedly or stop signs or excessive speeding. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, there are no additional requests for comment at this time.
Thank you. We will move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Yes.
I don't want to pull anything. I just wanted to say quickly that thank you for reappointing to the Arts Commission. I know she's excited about extending her term.
She does a very good job.
Yes, she's a force. Yes.
If there's no other discussion, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye. Nay? Okay, the consent agenda has passed. We'll now move into unfinished business. Bill 11088.
Do we want to admit a substitute bill on that?
No, that's the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry, the next one, my bad. Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Article 2, Downtown Special Business District, Section 638, Duties of the Advisory Commission, Subsection E.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill 11088? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Jack Sedick.
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker.
Yes.
The bill has passed final reading. Bill 11089. We need a motion and a second for a substitute bill.
Second.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's a motion. All in favor of the motion, or any discussion on the motion, sorry. All in favor of the motion?
Do you have a question?
Yes.
It looks like the tax rate went up.
Well, Mark, we can discuss that when we... So this is just to bring it to the floor for consideration? Once you guys approve that, to bring to the floor, then we can open for discussion.
I approve.
Okay.
I didn't ask you that yet.
To be asked.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, nay. Okay, the motion carries. Now, we... Are there any questions or comments on the substitute bill, 11089?
If Mr. Hawes or somebody can give a quick 30-second explanation as to why... Or Mary, I'm sorry, Mary, could a quick 30-second explanation as to rate increases?
Right. What happened is the assessed value after Board of Equalization met, we got the revised assessed valuation, and that went down by... For the city, it went down by 8.2 million. And then that increased the rate for each of those various... Like, general government went from 25 to 26.2. And police and fire went from 12.2 to 12.7. And parks went from 13.2 to 13.9. So, and that's just to keep that revenue at that same base. So they have an inverse...
A decrease in the assessments.
Correct, right, correct. So. And that was across the board, all the way through.
Parking at home.
Were only for the commercial real estate. The rates did not change for residential, what we talked about the last...
Correct. There was no change in rates for...
There was an adjustment in the commercial evaluations.
Correct.
That affected across the board. But residential is the same, what we talked about the last...
Residential and personal property rates did not change.
And we are not at our voter-approved... Matter of fact, these are rolled back a little bit, are they not, from our previous assessment year? And we're not at our voter-approved...
Right. Personal property is at the maximum, but the other ones are not. That's correct.
Even with the increase in evaluation, we still rolled it back.
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
We never read in the ordinance.
Ooh.
I'll be glad to do that right now.
Okay.
Never mind what was said.
This is an ordinance fixing and establishing the rate of taxation to be levied upon all real estate and certain tangible personal property in the city of Kirkwood, County of St. Louis, State of Missouri, for the year 2025, for the maintenance of the Kirkwood Public Parks, for the Police and Fireman's Pension Fund, for general government services, and for businesses in the Special Business District.
Are there any questions or comments on substitute bill 11089? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Jack Sedick.
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker.
Yes.
The bill has passed final reading. Do I have a motion, a second, to bring substitute bill 11090 to the floor for consideration?
Motion.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, nay. Okay, the substitute bill 11090 is on the floor.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance fixing and establishing the rate of taxation to be levied upon all real estate and certain tangible personal property in the city of Kirkwood, County of St. Louis, State of Missouri, for the year 2025, for the operation and maintenance of the Municipal Library District of Kirkwood.
Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Zimmer.
Yeah, just to clarify what we've talked about with the previous substitute bill, commercial increase, that was the only thing.
Yes, the same thing for the library, exactly.
Great. That's it, thank you.
Anything else? No. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Jack Sedick.
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker.
Yes.
Bill 11091.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance vacating 62.5 feet of a 70-foot-wide easement that exists on a tract of land located in part of Lot 9 of Rosewood, as described in Book 3216, Page 484, and being recorded in Plat Book 60, Page 8, of the St. Louis County Records, located in the city of Kirkwood, St. Louis County, Missouri, and more particularly described on Exhibits A and B, attached here, too, and incorporated by reference herein.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill 11091? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Jack Sedick.
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean. Councilmember Reinaker.
Yes.
We'll now move into new business. Bill 11092.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the transfer of real property, commonly known as Possum Woods Conservation Area, to be designated and maintained by the city as parkland associated with Emmane Edgar Park, and authorized in directing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the transfer.
Do I have a motion, a second, to accept Bill 11092 for first reading approval?
Bill moved.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Yes. Councilmember Schaefer.
So that we can have that answer for the second reading. Is there a cost to transfer this? That's my first question. And then do we have it in the budget, in our park board budget, to be able to maintain this piece of property in perpetuity? You betcha, please.
On the first question, there's no cost. They're not charging the city anything. Documents. Make sure that they're...
Can be absorbed in.
That they're done correctly. On the second point, I can't answer that, other than I think that...
Park Board, Kyle could answer that at second reading. He couldn't make it tonight.
It's all good. That's why I just brought it up, so we'd have that, so...
And I think he, in the past, told us that they're currently doing it.
Yes.
That's correct.
And so just he can verify what that effort has been, and then...
Right. I just want it on the record, that's all.
No, they're just deeding the property to the city of Kirkwood.
He can talk.
And the last thing we might mention, so that everyone watching and here understands that this is from the Missouri Department of Conservation.
Right.
It's a piece of land that's in the middle of our park. And we've been maintaining it, so they are now giving it to the city.
Right.
And it will be keeping the name Possum Woods? I sure hope so.
I don't know.
True, I hope so.
I don't know.
My collection is some of this land is in the city of Kirkwood and some is not in the city of Kirkwood. All right, so do we then incorporate it, incorporate it, or annex it into the city of Kirkwood? It still stays with...
Still in the other city.
Right, it's inside Hill.
Yeah, we won't mention their name.
Oh, sorry.
That's correct.
Yes.
I believe it will.
Okay.
We now own additional ground in this other city.
We already do, some of...
I know, right. That's why I said additional.
That's right.
Perfect.
It's just an extension.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All in favor of first reading approval of Bill 11092, say aye.
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 Nay? The bill has passed first reading approval. Bill 11093.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Article 8, Section 14-394O, Schedule D, Limited Parking, by allowing parking on the south side of West Jewel in the 500 and 600 blocks.
Do I have a motion, a second, to accept Bill 11093 for first reading approval?
Motion.
Okay. Comments or questions?
I have some things to say. Again, I have a few comments on this. You know, first of all, I just want to recognize that this really has been a frustrating issue that, over the past several months, across the board, and for many, you know, in all likelihood, for different reasons. I personally have learned a lot over the past month or two working on this. I've gained a greater appreciation of how different our neighborhoods can be and recognizing the different challenges within those neighborhoods. And sometimes a one-size-fits-all approach maybe isn't the best, but that's how we do a lot around here. So I also have a greater understanding of how our police department works. I have a greater understanding of how the SCIT committee works, which, when I was on the council before, we did not have the Street Code Issues Team. So I've had an opportunity to learn more about them. And I have a new appreciation for how easy it is to fail when you're really still trying to do the right thing. So from my perspective, I think some of the challenges we faced really included kind of a lack of across-the-board understanding and agreement to what we were trying to solve, and a lack of recognizing that there were going to be barriers. And that included the council, the SCIT neighbors, the chief administrative office in the police department. So all of us had our own approaches that might have been different. So in my concern, and I hope we continue to remember that keeping front and center the safety of our kids and access for our neighborhoods to gain EMS ambulance services and fire services are really important. I am encouraged that we've been able to keep, even though we're changing some of the ordinance back, that we are keeping the no-dropping off of the kids, the school drop-off, in that we have kind of opened up the street to allow public safety services to access some of those neighbors a little bit better. I appreciate Mr. Hawes allowing a city council member to sit and observe the SCIT committee because I think it's important for us to understand how this staff committee works and kind of, because a lot of times, just reading the minutes of something, you don't really know what the discussion was. And again, it's not a participation part, but it is something just to have a greater understanding of how decisions are made and the reasoning behind them. And I really do appreciate the school district's effort. You know, my previous years on council, and even today, I haven't seen a lot of opportunity for the school district and the city council and the city staff to really collaborate. And they were very quick to join this little subcommittee, even as they were facing school, you know, challenges starting. They were more than willing to help any way they could. They recognized the concerns. And they, too, have some of the same issues. And I do appreciate, you know, and I know Lisa's gone, but really appreciate having an opportunity to observe their collaboration. So I just hope, you know, right now, I hope that some, you know, when we have time, you know, this ordinance could be tweaked a little bit more. But right now, I know there's not a lot of appetite for visiting it. And I do hope that those who live on this street will, you know, familiarize themselves with what's going to be enforced and how this is going to be overall addressed. And again, I'm not going to vote for it, but I'm doing that only because I would like... I think there's other options for us to consider. I know today, or this month, or next month, or six months from now, it's probably not feasible. But I do hope at some point we figure out some other things to consider.
Any other comments? Yes.
So the dovetail off of you over there. I would like to add that I'm hoping that the no-student parking that's going to be added on each side of the street as you enter down on Jewel, that our school district's done a really good job of teaching them how to read the sign before they drive down the street. Because I think that's where a lot of our problem was, was students parking down there. So I'm hoping that that helps, and I hope the school district steps up and looks and sees whether there's students parking down the street. So we're going to hope and see whether that doesn't happen. And back to your point, in six months from now, maybe revisit this if it didn't work.
You know, I think the school district will continue to do any and everything. They have their own parking struggles on their parking lots. So I'm sure they're relying on the city to step up and manage the streets. But again, I think if there's something they could do to help, I have no doubt that the principal of the high school, the principal of the elementary school, and the leadership team over there would be more than willing to work with us.
Good. Any other comments? Yes.
Yeah, I think, you know, when we talked about this in the beginning, we were trying to solve a problem. We solved that problem. But at what balance? And I think this bill, hopefully, will provide some balance between the needs of what we saw needed to be corrected in the beginning to the needs of the residents that live there and have to use the street and want to use the street. Hopefully, the signs and that balance will continue, and we'll have a good outcome from it. But as we said in the beginning, we may have to tweak it. And here we are tweaking it, so, and that's okay.
Additional comments? All in favor of first reading approval of Bill 11093, say aye.
Aye.
Close, nay?
Aye.
Bill passes first reading approval. Resolution 86, 2025.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution accepting the single-source proposal of Zoll Medical Corporation, the amount of $399,602.48 for the purchase of seven Zoll cardiac monitors for the fire department, and authorizing and directing the director of procurement to issue a purchase order.
Do I have a motion, a second, to accept Resolution 86, 2025 as read?
Don't move.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions?
I'd like someone to explain how good the Zoll X-Series Advanced monitors are. My understanding is they're the cream of the crop. And I just want to make sure that our residents know that we're procuring... Although it's not the most expensive product on the market, I believe it's probably the cream of the crop.
We've got our medical director coming to the microphone right now, so...
Mayor and council, yeah, you're exactly right. It is a premier product on the market, although it is not the shiniest tool, the newest tool on the market. By what I've submitted to you, I think that you see the members of the department that use it day in and day out on our residents feel that it's the tool that they need. We've had this product currently for 10 years. It's passed its useful life cycle. We did a full evaluation, including the newest products on the market, and it was overwhelmingly that they wanted to go with this. There are many positives in this with Zoll, us being a previous customer and having good experience with that. And my relationship with our salesman, our sales representative, to work with them on pricing and things like that. This will also give us the ability to add a seventh monitor to our fleet, so we no longer have to jump equipment at one of the engine houses. It's going to improve operations, it'll improve response times. And overall, with the new advance and update to this monitor, it's incredible what these things can do. This one has TBI, which is traumatic brain injury, abilities to help us treat those patients. It's got the ability for us to further evaluate STEMI's, which are heart attacks in the field, to reevaluate them quicker on changes that occur, to change our treatments and things like that. It's got a feature on it that one of the best things is when they're ventilating a patient or giving them oxygen that they need. Now there's actually a monitor for that that will help the paramedics in the field to know that they're doing the right thing, delivering the right tidal volume, which is critical for patient survival. So it is a very, very good product.
Thank you. So will every truck have one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Right now, the only one that doesn't have one is one apparatus at Engine House 3, and they jumped that monitor from one truck to another when they take it out.
Hand it off. Yeah, good, okay.
Yeah. So this gives us the ability to place it on all apparatus.
Right.
And your old monitors, you're going to turn them in for...
Yes, sir. If you review the packet I submitted, the last line on the bid is a $60,000 credit for the six monitors that we currently have.
I just want to make sure that...
We don't give anything back for free. So...
Question on the account it's coming out of? Is that a capital account?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a capital.
It's a capital account that was budgeted for and approved.
Okay. So the machinery and equipment is a capital, and there's money in that account for...
Yes, ma'am. There's $400,000 in there that was approved by council last fiscal year.
Is that it for the account, or is there more in that account right now that you're still...
That will... There were, I think there were two things that will pretty much drain the account. That will be a...
Your account will be?
That particular count, yes. It's just one capital account.
That's funded through our typical...
Yes, typical process.
Not like branch or any of the other...
No, ma'am. There's, yeah, there's no matching on this. That it?
Good, thank you.
Thank you for all the information on the details on how you and your team vetted this new unit. And just thank you in general for what you do for the citizens of Kirkwood. It's very much appreciated.
I learned a long time ago, I shouldn't make decisions what they use on the street. I make decisions to make sure the money's there. They make the decisions on what they use. They make the decisions on what they use, and they just have to stay within the bumpers that I put down on a cost, and if not, we'll work through it. But the people that use the equipment should be the ones that choose the equipment. It's just that simple.
Yes. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Resolution has passed. We now move into, uh, council reports. I did want to, um, talk about Green Tree, and what a lovely festival, and how much that committee that we have seen, which is made up of, I don't even know, 30, 35 people, they worked so hard, starting in January, to produce what we saw last weekend. Um, it was a fabulous festival. There were 67, I, sorry, yeah, 67 floats in the parade. Um, there were 37 sponsors for a total of $60,000, and then there was another 10,000 in in-kind donations, so 70,000. We don't have numbers yet, they, uh, can't get that until tomorrow, but they do believe the numbers might have been down just a little bit, and I think that might have been a result of the heat. It was, it was hot, but it was dry, it was a dry heat, right?
Beer sales.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, um, the only other thing that, um, that I wanted to bring up, I was at a municipal leading, municipal league board meeting this afternoon, and they're going to have a Saturday, October 25th cleanup, and they're asking municipalities to take part in that, so thinking if, if you all think it's a good idea that we might choose a road and get citizens to come out and, and clean up, if that's, okay, we'll work, we'll work on that then. I think that'd be, all right. Other council reports. Mr. Schaefer?
Hi, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, couple, two things. Uh, one from the fire department. A fire department received a grant for confined space certification at 28, totaled from our department, as well as other departments that came. Uh, the expenditure was zero to the citizens and to the fire department, the only thing they paid for was bottled water. So that's that. And then the library board. Um, the summer reading program, they had 2,532 kids that came, which is great, 74, 74% read five hours or more weekly. Uh, there was 515 teens that signed up, that's 67% read 100 hours or more. Staff endowment grants, uh, they received, uh, some money for memory kit, for memory care. Uh, they go out into, uh, the community, and they received an $8,000 grant that somebody just walked in and handed them, because they had a loved one that was in that situation, and so they handed it off to the, uh, library to come out and keep them, and keep people engaged. They're also working on a new logo for the library, it's their 100th year coming up. And then the last one that several people have asked, uh, they are going to put a new flagpole, pole in the ground in, at, at the front of the library. They're not going to hang it, or take it out like a telescope, like they had talked about. So, that's from the library.
Good job, Paul, getting that flagpole.
Working on it.
Yeah.
But the lights?
Uh, landing lights stay.
Chief Administrative Officer report.
Yes, Mayor, I appreciate you bringing up the, uh, Green Tree Festival. I just wanted to point out what a fine job our various departments did in coordinating, uh, through the parade, the police department, uh, always does an excellent job keeping everyone safe at that parade, and making sure that traffic is controlled appropriately. Uh, the fire department, and I wish Dave Smith were still here, but he has left, but, uh, they did an incredible job with heat-related illness, uh, during the event, it was super hot, uh, and there were 12, uh, interventions that I'm aware of, and there may have been more, but there were 12 that involved, uh, serious interventions where they had to, like, really cool these people down, and make sure they didn't, uh, you know, get worse in the heat. Um, and the sanitation, the public works, the recreation department, all showed the best of what Kirkwood can be. Uh, and this is truly an incredible festival that has great history. Uh, I echo your comments about the volunteers on the Green Tree Committee, year after year after year, they put on an incredible festival, and, uh, I'm proud of our city for having such a fine festival, and proud of our departments for coordinating it and making it happen.
Thank you.[1691.33]